All right, everyone, it's a minute after six o'clock, so we'll call this meeting to order.
Mayor Hollis?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Uh, here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Poston Muffet?
Here.
Mr. Vokel?
Here.
Mr. Normile?
Here. Like to invite Commissioner Jim Nor- Normile to lead us in our invocational prayer. Would please, sir?
I sure will. Look, just humor before we get real serious.
Absolutely.
Just because there's a busload of ministers in your family does not mean that it automatically pats its on for everybody. Thank you for the opportunity here. Today's is Flag Day. It was proclaimed by the Second Continental Congress in 1777. There was a lot of posting on the Book of Many Faces about that today and thought maybe we would just stay within history as we go to prayer tonight. And I'm just going to read a small portion of what Reverend Duchesne offered in the first Continental Prayer when the Reverend was just talking about the elected officials. As you may recall, depending on when you went through high school, we had to learn some of this when I went to high school, but prayer is really long. It's really good, but it's really long. So I just want to share with what Reverend Duchesne had to say in the first Continental Congress when he offered this prayer in 1774. And it's just the end of it where he's talking about and challenging the council and the council members in the chamber. So in your own way, if you would, please bow your head and we'll go with prayer. And here's what Reverend Duchesne had to say. He said, "Be thou present, O God of wisdom, and direct the councils of this honorable assembly. Enable them to settle things on the best and surest foundation, that the scene of blood may be speedily closed, that order, harmony, and peace may be effectively restored, and truth and justice, religion, piety prevail and flourish amongst the people. Preserve the health of their bodies and vigor of their minds. Shower down on them and the millions they represent such temporal blessings as thou seest expedient for them in this world, and crown them with everlasting glory in the world to come. All this we ask in the name and through the merits of Jesus Christ, the Son and of our Savior." And we all said?
Amen.
Amen. And we thank Reverend Duchesne for offering that prayer in 1774.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Jim. If everyone, please rise and face the flag with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number five would be the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. We have a few public announcements. The American Red Cross Blood Drive will be held Friday, June 17th from 1:00 to 5:30 PM in the community center. Our next Golf Cart Advisory Committee meeting will be held June 21st at 5:30 PM here in the town boardroom. Police Educating the Public: Beach and Water Safety by the Emerald Isle Fire Department will be June 21st at a special time at 6:30 PM in the town boardroom. Our next Coffee with a Cop will be held June 23rd at 9:00 AM in the town boardroom. The next Emerald Fest, actually, the first installment of our Emerald Fest will be the Mad Fiddler. It'll be playing June 23rd, 6:30 PM at the Western Ocean Regional Access. The next installment at Emerald Fest will be Big Sam and Company on June 30th, 6:30 at the Western Ocean Regional Access. And our inaugural Western Carteret Firework Celebration will be Sunday, July 3rd. The event runs from 6:00 to 10:00 PM, presented by Emerald Isle Realty and Mac Daddies. You can find further details on our website. Independence Day, Monday, July 4th, our offices will be closed. Our administrative offices will be closed. Emerald Fest, Barefoot Wade, July 7th at 6:30 PM, Western Ocean Regional Access. Our next Neighborhood Watch Board Meeting will be held Tuesday, July 5th at 6:00 PM in the town boardroom. And our next Board of Commissioners Meeting will be held July 12th at 6:00 PM here in the boardroom. I have a couple of proclamations that I would like to read. Do we have anyone here from the Golf Cart Committee by chance? Didn't see anyone when we came in, just wanted to make sure. This proclamation is recognizing our Emerald Isle Golf Cart Advisory Committee. Whereas the Emerald Isle Golf Cart Advisory Committee works diligently to recommend and support golf cart accessibility improvements throughout the town. And whereas the Golf Cart Advisory Committee created a fundraiser that would support its own initiatives and benefit the Emerald Isle Business Association with the help of area businesses. Whereas the members of the Golf Cart Advisory Committee, the Emerald Isle Business Association, dedicated their time in spring 2022 to conduct a successful golf cart raffle. Whereas the following businesses and groups are recognized for assisting in the golf cart raffle. John's Golf Cars, Emerald Isle Golf Cart Rentals, Swansboro Rotary Club, Emerald Isle Parks and Recreation, Fish Hut Grill, The Growler, The Emerald Club, Ace Hardware, Plaza Mexico, Emerald Isle Bookstore, Willis Seafood, Village Market, Circle Pizza, Surf's Up, Ellie's Gift Shop, and Sweet Spot. Now, therefore, I, Jason Holland, Mayor of the Town of Emerald Isle, hereby issue this proclamation recognizing the Emerald Isle Golf Cart Advisory Committee and named businesses and encourage everyone to see how they can give back to their community. Proclaim this 14th day of June 2022. Jason Holland, Mayor, Emerald Isle. Our next proclamation recognizes the Alzheimer's Association Longest Day on June 21st, 2022. Whereas Alzheimer's disease is the most common form of dementia that affects memory, thinking, and behavior, it is a progressive degenerative disease of the brain that affects over 5 million Americans and over 180,000 North Carolinians. The greatest risk factor for this disease is age over 65, and women are at the epicenter of the Alzheimer's epidemic, accounting for two-thirds of cases. This disease is the sixth leading cause of death and the cause of death among the top 10 in the United States that cannot be prevented, cured, or even slowed. Alzheimer's disease is the most expensive disease in America and has become a national crisis. And whereas since 1980, the Alzheimer's Association has worked to enhance care and support, advance research, and advocate for people with Alzheimer's and their family and caregivers. The Alzheimer's Association vision is to reduce the risk of dementia through the promotion of brain health. The Alzheimer's Association, the leading voluntary health organization, envisions a world without Alzheimer's and has an impact on the global, national, and local level. And whereas the longest day is a sunrise-to-sunset team event to raise funds and awareness for the Alzheimer's Association. This event is held annually on the Summer Solstice and symbolizes the challenging journey of those living with the disease and their caregivers and those lost to the disease. On this day, teams all around the world will come together to honor the strength, passion, and endurance of those facing Alzheimer's. And now, therefore, I, Jason Holland, Mayor of Emerald Isle, do hereby recognize Alzheimer's Association Longest Day on June 21st, 2022, the Summer Solstice. The Alzheimer's Association Longest Day Emerald Isle Sea Turtle Crawl will take place this year on Saturday, June 18th. I encourage everyone to join the group as they walk the beach in Emerald Isle from sunrise to sunset to raise funds and awareness to support research, care, and support for those affected by Alzheimer's and their family and caregivers. Together, we work towards our vision, a world without Alzheimer's. Proclaim this 14th day of June 2022. Jason Holland, Mayor, Emerald Isle. All right, item number seven will be our public comment. Have the public has an opportunity to come to the podium and address the board or any concerns or comments of any items of concern that are not on the agenda tonight. There was a sign up sheet in the back as you came in the door, but if you haven't signed up already, you're more than welcome to come up for a public comment now. All right, appears to be no public comment, so we will move on to item number eight, which will be our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Item number nine will be the presentation of Emerald Isle Fishing Tournament Scholarships. I'll call on Commissioner Mark Taylor to start us off there, sir, please.
All right, thanks for letting me have the floor for a little bit. If I could have any of my board members come up with me for a little bit, and then also, Jason, if you'd help me out with this, the mayor. So this is what we've worked for. The tournament's been going on now for four years, and during the four-year process, we fished three of the four. One year, we got watched out, but we still were able to give away scholarships. And this is what it's all about, is trying to do the scholarships that, and do a little bit of dredging around Emerald Isle, too, and bring some funds up and stuff. We work really hard. It's only a day tournament, but it takes all year to kind of put the thing on. And with our scholarships, it's, we raised most of those funds through our auction the night before at our captain's party. It's not only just the captain's party, it was open for everybody at the town hall. We're lucky enough to have it down at the Islander. They sponsor us down there and let us use that building, and we have a great time. We get a lot of great items donated through our local town, and it actually reaches all the way out through the county and even over in the Swansboro area, helps support us in this area. The, without our, three of our major sponsors, which are, last year, we had Jason Holland Mortgage Lending Team, The Real Outdoors, and Goose Creek Marina. That's our top three. And I have to report this year that Tractor Country has stepped up, and now for the first place winner of our King Boating Tournament, the money that we normally give away, they're also going to top that off with another $5,000. So the tournament is growing, is getting bigger and better every year. We're having a lot of fun out there, always looking for volunteers. They have a tournament to come out and help us some. We're, you know, the more people we can get out there, the more fun we'll have and just have a great time. But the main thing that we developed this tournament for was to kind of give back to the community, and we're hoping that some of the people that are receiving the scholarships today, and when they're finished with their education, that maybe they'll come back and be able to support us in some way in the maritime fields that they're getting into. And each one is a different field, but it's, that was our hope, and we're three years into it, four now, and we're starting to see a little bit of that return coming back now. But what I'd like to do now is let Jason call out each winner this year. We've got six winners. We were able to, this is our biggest year so far. All the winners get a $3,000 scholarship, so we're giving away six scholarships, $3,000 each. We're proud of my committee here, we're proud of what they've done, and it just continues to grow each year. And Jason, I'd like you to...
Yes, sir, absolutely. And well said, and before it gets lost, thank you to all of the Emerald Isle Fishing Tournament Committee members. Mark, thank you for your vision. I know it's been a lot of work getting this thing off the ground. It's a pleasure to see it grow, and without you, the Fishing Tournament Committee, the sponsors, all the volunteers, and our fishermen and fisherman women, it wouldn't be what it is today, and hats off to you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
So congratulations.
Lot of fun.
Absolutely. Our first scholarship recipient is Alfred Morris III. Al comes to us from West Carteret High School and hopes to pursue an education, a further education at NC State. So, Mr. Morris, are you in the crowd with us?
So, and some of the, our candidates, NC State, this is having their orientation, so if they're going to NC State, they could be doing an orientation right now. If not, we'll get, get this to them. But congratulations for a $3,000 scholarship there.
Congratulations, Mr. Morris. Thank you so much. Our next recipient is Tyler Gillette. Tyler comes to us from Swansboro High School and is also pursuing further education at NC State. Tyler, are you with us tonight?
Come on up.
Come on up, buddy. You earned it.
Tyler, tell us a little bit, what do you plan on doing at NC State? What's your goal?
I'm undecided right now, but I'm looking at marine science.
Marine science, sir. Well, hopefully this $3,000 can go a little ways toward what you want to be, sir. Thank you.
Tyler, congratulations, sir. We'll have you come over to the side here, and then we'll get a group one there. All right, our next scholarship recipient is Bryce Frye. Bryce also comes to us from Swansboro High School and is pursuing further education at Appalachian State. Bryce, tell us a little bit about what, what your further education's going to entail?
So I plan on majoring in environmental science with the Earth Systems priority, and I plan on maybe getting a master's degree to lead a team of researchers.
Very good. Congratulations on your hard work. You deserve it. Our next scholarship recipient comes to us from Croatan High School and is going to further his education beginning at Carteret Community College, Hunter Wood. Tell us a little bit about what your next steps are, Hunter?
So I'm looking to obtain a business administration degree so I can build my charter fishing company into something that can help raise awareness for conservation of like local game fish species and just...
I believe you said in your application that your charter business was going to be, obviously, for catching fish and stuff like that, but a heavy focus on fisherman education, right?
Fish, fisheries management, and just wildlife conservation is what it's all about.
Very good. Congratulations to you. You earned it. Thank you. All right, our next scholarship recipient is James Lawrence. James comes to us, to us from East Carteret High School and is planning to further his education at the Northeast Maritime Institute. James, are you with us tonight? Come on up, sir. James, will you tell us a little bit about what your plans are?
Um, well, I plan on getting my, or a degree in nautical science and getting all the qualifications and requirements to get my 100-ton captain's license and just pursue opportunities.
Very good. Congratulations, you earned it. Good job. Okay. And our final scholarship recipient is Samantha Lewis. Samantha, unfortunately, was not able to be here with us tonight, but comes to us from East Carteret High School and plans to further her education at NC State. So a hand of applause for Samantha Lewis.
Thank you all again. Congratulations to all.
Congratulations to you all.
Yeah, thank you very much. If you're interested in fishing the tournament this year, it's September 17th. You can sign up online, and Tractor Country's already donated a Yeti Cooler, so early registration right now, you'll get your name in the hat for that Yeti Cooler, and we'll give that away. But once again, thank you. Thanks for letting me have this privilege of being up here.
All right, one more final congratulations to you graduates, and congratulations to the parents of those graduates, and so obviously, your, your, your hard work is paying off, too. You got a great group there, and hats off to you all. I'm proud of you all. Item number 10, we have a couple of employee recognitions and introductions. First off, I'd like to invite up Parks and Rec Director Candace Dooley.
I would ask for Jerry Talton to please join me up front. So tonight, I have the pleasure of recognizing Jerry for 20 years of service with the Town of Emerald Isle. And a little bit about Jerry is not only is he an amazing team member for Parks and Recreation, he is an amazing woodworker as well. And since his wife is joining us tonight, they are celebrating 21 years of marriage this Thursday. So, great week for Jerry. But tonight, I present to you in sincere and grateful recognition of your faithful and dedicated service to the Town of Emerald Isle, Parks and Recreation, 20 years of service. On behalf of the mayor, Board of Commissioners, staff, and citizens of the Town of Emerald Isle, this service award is hereby bestowed upon you as a token of our appreciation and esteem. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you all very much.
That's it?
That's it.
Congratulations, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
All right, next up, I'd like to invite Chief Mike Panzarella.
Thank you. Good evening. Always a great time to come to the podium, especially when it's to speak good things about our department. Tonight, I'd like to introduce you to our new Assistant Chief of Police, Mr. Chad Edwards, and I'm going to have Chad come forward and say a few words.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, guys, for having me. Excuse me, I know you guys have much more important business to attend to than listen to me talk about myself. These guys said they expected a speech, but you're not getting it, sorry. I'm Chad Edwards. I've been in law enforcement since 2003. I started out at Little Washington Police Department where I grew up, and I spent the last 16 years with East Carolina University Police Department. We missed the small-town atmosphere that I grew up with in Little Washington. We vacationed in Emerald Isle, you know, every summer, and just fell in love with the town. So we're honored to have a part, to have an opportunity to move here. A little about me, I've got a degree from Liberty University in Criminal Justice and Homeland Security. I'm working on my MPA from ECU. I'm a firearms instructor and alert instructor, and I look forward to working with you guys and with Chief Panzarella to maintain the integrity and professionalism of the Emerald Isle Police Department. This is a very family-oriented department. It's one of the things that attracted me to come here, just the fact that when we did our introductions, that they had their wife and kids in the audience, that we're interested to see who got this job. That's the kind of place that everybody wants to work for, so thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chief. Panzarella, Assistant Chief Edwards, heard a lot of great things about you, excited to get to know you better and looking forward to things to come. If I could ask EMS Chief David Jones up next, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Board, for having me here tonight. I don't know how I'm going to follow those two very motivational speeches, but EMS has two new paramedics joining our team. The first one, I'm going to bring it up as Robin Warres. So Robin comes to us from Eastern Wake, North Carolina. She moved to Emerald Isle early this year to help take care of some family. She worked for Eastern Wake EMS since 1996, and she's been a paramedic since the year 2000. She brings a wealth of knowledge and experience to our team. She began part-time with us in March of this year and loved it so much that she wanted to come full-time. So we welcomed her to our team. She brings an absolute wealth of knowledge and experience from her time at Eastern Wake. Our second one is Tayah Marshall. Tayah Marshall was a graduate of Clark Community College Paramedic Program in 2019. She comes to us from Beaufort EMS. She says that she loves the atmosphere of EI, along with the beach and fall fishing. She says coming to Emerald Isle allows her the opportunity to grow as a paramedic and looks forward to joining our team. Tayah will actually join us this Thursday as her first full-time day, and Robin joined us last Thursday on the night.
Thank you, Chief, and appreciate it very much, and welcome Robin and Tayah to our staff. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Before we move into item 11, the 2022-2023 budget, to our scholarship recipients and their families, love to have you here for the remainder of the meeting, but didn't want you to feel obligated to stay, so if you want to get a jump on dinner or whatever's next, feel free there, guys. It's completely up to you guys.
Everybody loves a one-hour budget briefing.
Thank you all for coming. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Before we move on to item 11, and staying on item number 10, we do have one more new employee introduction.
Yes, Mayor, so I'll take the full responsibility for failing to place our new Parks and Recreations Director onto the agenda for an introduction tonight. It would be remiss if we didn't follow our own protocol. So this time, I'd like to call it Ms. Candace Dooley. Maybe she could tell you a little bit about herself and her new, new acquisition and role as Parks and Recreations Director. So Candace, my sincere professional apologies for failing to do that.
I was truly just going to let this one go, but I guess I won't get away with that. What's that?
This is our on-the-spot segment.
Yes, I guess so. So I don't think I've even spoken as much when I was a board member, but, so I am starting Week Five as your new Director of Parks and Recreation. I've said it a dozen times, and I'll say it hundreds more, I am truly where I am meant to be. Not that I don't miss sitting over there with you all, but it has been an absolute blessing and pleasure to work for the Town of Emerald Isle in this role, and I am just very grateful. I come to you with six years of board experience, a bachelor's degree in business administration, and I've also organized and run the Emerald Isle Marathon, Half Marathon, and 5K for the last eight years. So a lot of event experience, and I have truly just jumped in with both feet in the last five weeks, and it's been a great pleasure, and I look forward to serving you for many years to come.
Thank you, Candace. Welcome. Thank you.
So from a staff perspective, those are extremely tough shoes to fill with the retirement of Alicia Sanderson, and we are so thankful and welcoming to Candace as she has jumped right in, as she indicated. So as we prepare for the upcoming year, tonight would be the opportunity for my office and Finance Director, Rajford, to present our draft 23, 2022-2023 budget. And for those that were here in May or tuned in in May, we appreciate it. This will be a repeat of our May meeting, but we want to make sure that we give the public a full opportunity in a, in a very comprehensive presentation pertaining to our budget process. So if you will, board members should have a paper copy of what we're about to go through, and any member of the public, the information of which we'll speak to, all the highlights should be found in any one of the screens throughout the room. The general overview of our proposed budget, it is a balanced draft budget, which is oftentimes the targeted goal for both management and my office and finance team. And we, we would begin by thanking all of our department heads for their assistance in getting us to this point. Tremendous amount of work between the months of August of last year, when we began conversations with the board, our preliminary meetings in January, and then our department head meetings and one-on-one conversations that were held all through first quarter of '22. So again, highlighting August and January were two day-long sessions where the board was invested highly into the goal-setting for the 22-23 recommended budget. We will maintain and/or improve any areas of high standards for the Town of Emerald Isle while trying to combat a very, very high abnormal CPI of now north of 9%, and we were able to bring all those details together in a budget that will be proposed on a tax rate at 16.5 cents. rate at 16.5 cents. Now, this is a one-cent tax increase over the previous year, but we would like to identify that we have worked very hard to keep that tax rate as low as possible. There's also a proposed minor increase in the budget for solid waste services, which provide us twice-weekly trash collection, once-weekly recycling collection, unlimited curbside collection, five days a week with two trucks running now, eight hours a day, so 80 hours or more per week of yard debris collection as well. And we were able to even maintain that with a spike in fuel delivery of increasing it only 84 cents per month. So, we believe that at $275, we're still the strongest value in Carteret County in that area of collections. And that is your general overview for this year's proposed budget. In our primary and capital plan goals, we want to highlight six specific areas, and we'll just go through here. We're going to continue to enhance and focus our efforts in beach safety, which is an extremely important part of who we are and what we do. The second is how we handle emergency services. So, for the last nine months, we have had a comprehensive team researching all that is possible with emergency services. And as you know, there are more and more people visiting, living, and vacationing here, and we're seeing growth numbers that are extremely high. And that's also felt on the emergency services side with fire calls, emergency response calls. And as Chief Jones indicated, tonight, we are enhancing our team by attracting and hiring more paramedics that are highly certified. So, all of that goes into item number two, which is our emergency services evaluation. Unfortunately, or fortunately, for the individuals on the list, we have to prepare for the retirement of a 30-plus-year veteran in Artie Dunn, who has dedicated his whole career here in Public Works, and we are preparing for his departure in October. We also are planning ahead for Fire Chief Bill Walker, who will be coming up on his 36th anniversary. And as he does so, he says that that may be his final year of service to the town. So, with 36 years, we do anticipate Chief Walker's retirement. And right on his heels, with 35 years of service, will be Assistant Chief Askew. So, we are preparing for both Mr. Dunn, Chief Walker, and Assistant Chief Askew in this budget. In regard to the retention of our current talent, our town plan includes for a CPI adjustment of 7.8%, which is trying to keep pace with the year-over-year changes for our employees, an exceptional medical, dental, and vision plan, and additional assets that would make Emerald Isle a premier employer and continue to be as competitive as possible in the market. Furthermore, our total budget is approximately $12.7 million. And the area of interest that's often discussed is our general fund, which is just north of $12 million at 12.2. Our general fund tax rate being proposed tonight is 16.5 cents, which, again, is one penny higher than the year previous, but allows us to remain the second lowest of the 21 North Carolina beachfront communities. Our property taxes, as proposed, would generate roughly $5 million. And with an average household at near $400,000 in value, that means that the annual taxes would be as equitable to $660 for all the services that we receive. And then, when you add on the solid waste, that means the annual investment per property on average would be $935 for the police, fire, emergency services, solid waste, and all the appurtenances that come with what we provide. Our sales tax revenue is still remaining strong. It's estimated at $2.69 million, and we'll turn on further. The other area of high interest that maintains who we are and what we do from an industrial economic development side of the house would be beach nourishment. And we're proposing no changes there, with roughly $628,000 to be dedicated in the next budget to future nourishment needs in beach handling. So, again, no change there. The beachfront communities of the special district rate would see a four-cent overlay, and one cent of our consistent 16.5 would be dedicated to future nourishment. So, in that fund today, there's roughly $5 million. And to remind everybody, the local Emerald Isle residents that are contributing to this beach nourishment are compounded and added to with the bed tax. So, occupancy tax and our local taxes are the only dollars that are driven into beach nourishment. So, we are a self-sustaining plan. With our County Shoreline Protection Office housed right here, we are working to protect the beach, the environment, and all that people find amazing and interesting along our coastline. I'll stop there. Any questions about the general overview so far or anything about beach nourishment? Going back to our presentation, our next slide, we want to talk about general fund balances. This is, in late terms, your savings account, how much you're holding over. And so, right now, our adjusted fund balance would be projected at nearly $3.5 million at the close of our fiscal year, which would be June 30. That's 28% or roughly the ability to operate for one quarter or 90 days without any revenue coming in. EMS services would generate roughly $235,000, which is one quarter of their budget, which means that our taxpayers are helping to pick up the remaining 75%. If you haven't seen one golf cart, you haven't seen 1,300. So, right now, our golf cart permit sales continue to rise as the popularity of the program is continuously compounding. And we estimate roughly $120,000 in permit revenue would be received in the coming year. And we are recommending that the $25,000 annual contribution be dedicated to our golf cart advisory committee's usage for future improvements. And what you see photographed here are improvements, for example, at James Street. And you'll know that in the last 24 months, we've gone from 63 dedicated parking spaces to well over 111 identified golf cart spots and improvements, which are generated from those permit revenues and then reinvested into the program. So, any questions about any of the items on this slide? Now, in a comparison analysis, we want to talk about the tax rate adjustment. The words "minor" and "tax" usually aren't in our vernacular, because every dollar that we collect has to be reinvested for the betterment of the community. We understand how important it is specifically in times such as today. And our 16.5 cent general fund tax rate would cost, on average, approximately $56 per month per property owner on average. Now, we know that that $56 is substantially less than most monthly cable bills, usually half of a smartphone bill, or even a daily cup of coffee. That's dinner for two at a moderately-priced restaurant. It could potentially be a movie for a family of four. We used to say a tank of fuel, but now we use, this past month, it was a half a tank, and I may have to adjust it to a third a tank of fuel, just depending on what the dollar rate is today and how much you're putting in your tank. But the reality is, with the inflationary costs, we believe that the instructions from the seated council members and the actions taken by staff, that we're going to present a very high value to our constituents for that $56 that we're asking for them to contribute each month. From a historical perspective, we have 75 full-time employees, and we're not proposing any new positions at this time. We also, again, are planning for those three key retirements, specifically in Public Works and two in the fire side of operations. And one thing that's important to point out, that all the great things we see happening across the community are dedicated to a myriad of dollars invested. And we have been able to shoulder and burden some of these costs with substantial grant infusion. And in the past 20 years, north of $84 million has flown through this community that was not from the tax base. And that is an important statistic to slow down and consume. With an annual budget of 11.5 to 12 million, we've been able to procure nearly $84 million of assistance in a two-decade period. So, from a perspective of the calendar, options, and ideas, we presented you a draft budget per North Carolina statute last month. We have slated tonight, immediately following this presentation, the opening of your public hearing, where we'll take any comments from the community. If you would like to, you do have the opportunity to pass the budget this evening, or if you want, we could hold additional meetings if necessary. But it is the recommendation of my office and the Finance Director that we brought forth a suitable plan that is balanced and that will provide high, high, high delivery and meet the targeted goals that were identified by the board earlier in the year. And sometimes a picture is worth 12.2 million words, so we'll show you what that looks like in a photograph. And our chart shows you where the demand goes for the dollars, where our $56 per month is actually reallocated. And the large section at the bottom, nearly 20.5% in the blue area, is for policing and protection. The other large section of blue is fire at 18%. Solid waste makes up nearly 15% of our revenue and our expenditures. And Parks and Recreation comes in at 8.67%. Each of the other areas are minor slices of the pie, but every single dollar that comes in is equitably important if you're a user of the path, if you're the user of a service or a fee, our planning department. And we know this, this is our statement, that when you call the police department, the fire, or the EMS, you're oftentimes calling on your worst day and not the best day that you're having. And we want to make sure we put the best, most well-trained, and outfitted individuals to our recipients that are in those time of needs. So, in a pictorial, here's where the $2022-2023 would be invested in general overview. At this time, I'll pause, ask the board, any team members, if there are any questions pertaining to the budget. And if, again, if they're tough ones, I'll absolutely defer them to Ms. Rochford. The easy ones, glad to take. But between the two of us, we should be able to answer any questions that may be risen from the floor.
Thank you, Matt.
Yes, sir.
Any questions from the board for Matt and/or Laura? At this time, I'll ask for a motion to go into public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Do we have any, excuse me, questions, comments, or concerns from our residents today? Yes, sir, if you would. Come to the podium there. Grab you a mic there so the online can hear you.
My name is Peter Carey. I've been here for 21 years. My question is about the, my only question is, or concern as a resident is, and I'm not sure, maybe this is straightforward, is what happens with the new evaluation that's coming through from the county and the tax valuation? You know, if my house doubles in price, is my tax going to double in price? You know, as far as the tax evaluation? You know, if it's...
I don't know that they're going to do a valuation this year. They do it every four years.
Well, we just, I mean, the county just came around and did the evaluation.
That does go to 2024. That's my understanding that it will be in effect, even though they're taking the analysis now.
Yep.
I don't think it will be.
Okay, good.
But to answer your question specifically, every year that we do have, or every four years, when we have those evaluations, we do calculate. And many times, we'll vote to a revenue mutual. So, sometimes we'll actually, if the values go up, we'll actually reconsider.
That's right. I think that's what happened last time. I just want to make sure I was clear there. Okay, good. Thank you.
So, Mr. Carey brings up a great point. So, the community may have seen the evaluators making their way through Emerald Isle. And again, we do want to let you know that those data points that they're collecting today are for the calculations of the next budget cycle. So, thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Matt. Any other questions, comments, concern from the community?
Motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. It's broken down into four motions here. So, I'll ask for a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget ordinance.
Make a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget ordinance.
All in favor, say aye. Motion is approved. Next motion would be to adopt the fiscal year 2022-2023 fee schedule.
I'll make a motion to adopt the fiscal year 22-23 fee schedule.
All in favor, say aye. Motion is approved. Next motion would be to adopt the five-year capital replacement improvement program.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt the five-year capital replacement improvement program.
All in favor, say aye. Motion is approved. Final motion would be to adopt the fiscal year 2022-2023 pay plans.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the fiscal year 22-23 pay plan.
All in favor, say aye. Motion is approved. Thank you all very much. All right. Item number 12 will be our McLean Spell Park Master Plan Process Update. Candace Dooley, if you will, please.
Again, Mayor and Board, thank you. It's a pleasure. So, my first presentation on this side was one of the first tasks that I was given by Matt, the McLean Spell Park, and I'm working alongside Summit Engineering. What you're being given right now is the questionnaire that is going to be put out to the public, hopefully, starting first thing tomorrow morning. And so, this is going to give us a public participation and community needs assessment for the McLean Spell Park, which is the 30-acre plus-or-minus tract of land. We have about nine acres for potential development. And so, we're going to get the public's input on what they feel they would like to see there and would not like to see there in the future. To give you a little update, I've had three meetings with Summit Engineering now at this point. And for a timeline, again, the survey will go public tomorrow. We will have this in paper form at all of our offices. We will have a QR code that is laminated that they can scan and go on and do that. It'll be on our website and every media outlet that we can, provided by ANA, so that everyone will have the opportunity to give their input about this particular tract of land. This survey will close on July 4. And then, by July 20, Summit Engineering will report back to me on what the public wants. We will then, again, move forward, continuing to meet every two weeks is our timeline at this point, every Tuesday at 10:00 a.m. And we will have a needs and equality assessment given to me on July 22. And then, we will begin working on the concept options, drawing up different plans, what we could possibly do with that property, working with Cherry Point Marine Corps Air Station, since they were a provider of some of the funds for this property as well, and it is a flyover zone. Cost estimate will then be provided to us by September 30 for all three potential development options. And the master plan report should be provided to me no later than November 25, when I can bring that forward to you again at that time. And again, this is just for anyone in the public to be able to give their ideas so that we can get a better understanding of what the public wants on that particular piece of property. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Candace. Any questions from the board?
Candace, I've come in to this for the first time, honestly. But is there anywhere that stipulates whether these are people-owned properties?
So, I believe that's listed as one of your first questions in there. Yes.
Residents, but residents could be a renter, what have you. I'm just asking, is there anything that you own a property?
It does, it's asked if you're a resident, and if you are a resident, do you live in Emerald Isle so many months per year? And then, are you of Carteret County? And the reason you're just getting this is it was just provided to me today at 10:00 a.m. I could add that particular question in.
Add that to that list, if you would, please.
Sure. Could you just repeat specifically what it was that you wanted?
Just typically, you know, are you a property owner?
Sure.
In Emerald Isle.
Okay. Will do.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Candace.
Thanks, Candace.
All right. Item number 13 will be our beach safety messaging update. Ocean Rescue Coordinator Billy Mathias.
Good evening. Found this logo down long enough to get a haircut, so it is me. Been on a little fast-paced here for the past couple of months. But back here tonight, to give an update on our water safety efforts along our beach strand here on Emerald Isle. Just to recap, this was a slide that you may have seen last month. Our 2021 summer season had 75 water rescue calls, 4,187 warrant swimmer checks. So, that is, in addition to could-have-been-a-water-rescue-call, but we went out preventative lifeguarding, warned those individuals to come in, come out of the rip current, or just get out of the water on those red flag days. 698 welfare checks and over 10,000 public education encounters, whether that be through a PE system on the vehicles, at the lifeguard towers, or individuals stopping and checking on those groups when we do have those flag changes, or just to solely educate individuals along our beach strand on our beach safety warning flags. Another big change for us this year was the after-hours data analysis. We've seen that data pool show, after our guards came off the beach strand at 5:30 in previous years, we were seeing those incidents still occurring in those evening hours. So, we made that change in this 2022 summer season. This year, we have nine lifeguards on duty during peak seizing hours. So, at 10 o'clock in the morning, they're going out to the beach strand by 10:30. You have seven lifeguards. Two of those lifeguards to make up that additional nine are coming at noon time and covering a mid-shift from 12 to 8. So, our beach strand is protected with two lifeguards up until 7:30 at night. So, and those areas are focused on those hot zones between Black Skimmer and Doe Ramp. 36 water safety flags. Shift patrol start end times, we adjusted those. Previous years, they were on the beach strand at 10. As I just said, they're now on the beach strand at 10:30. They're getting off those additional seven or eight. They're getting off, those additional seven are getting off at 6:00 p.m. instead of 5:30. So we saw the data pool, saw where our hours needed adjusting on those calls that we were seeing in previous years, and went ahead and made that. Social media and public service announcements. Educational outreach to transient population. Over the years, we've identified several times, we've worked to try to reach out to these transient populations, those that are coming in from other regions, those day trippers coming to Emerald Isle. And then the technological advancement that we have seen through webcams and other media outlets. So these here, these are beach safety flag signs. We have 30 on the beach strand. All 30 besides one, so 29 of them have one of these signs. And tomorrow, waiting on those additional sign to come in, we have six on the roadside. Going over that staffing, again, that depicts everything I spoke of. Patrols' times start at 10:30 in the morning with seven guards that end times at 6 o'clock. The mid-shift comes in at noon time, and they come off the beach strand at 7:30. Those public service announcements distributed across Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, YouTube, town emails, website, the app, along with other municipal media outlets as well. One of our big strides, targeting the transient population, working with Anna, Matt, and getting some of this stuff out. Tabletoppers, QR code stickers, media displays at western regional and eastern regional accesses, trying to get that message out to those people coming to our public areas. 2021, we've had these tabletoppers. On one side of those tabletoppers, you will see our flag and all of the verbiage that we currently follow through the USLA. That verbiage is updated as the USLA updates their verbiage. One of the biggest ones was the yellow flags stating that even weak swimmers shouldn't be entering on those yellow flag days. Again, that's Mother Nature. We're dealing with the ocean. Not a strong swimmer, even on those yellow flag days, stay closer to shore or wear proper flotation. One side outlines the beach warning flags, and the other side displays rip current information, which is provided to us by Seagram. Beach safety QR code stickers. Through the help of Anna and Laura finding the money in the budget for these, we've, Anna's distributed these, along I believe with the police department, to these area businesses. And so you're able to snap that QR code with your media device, click on it, and it takes you straight to the Emerald Isle's beach safety page. Flag updates, beach safety, questions and answers, everything that we have on that town page can be accessed through that one QR code. This actually was a project that I came into after the fact. Anna and Matt were working on this with the Islander, along with our other hotels I believe we're in the process of. But ocean safety is a key that's actually going on the hotel keys. So those visitors coming in and staying at these, or at the Islander currently, has that there, has the access to the QR code and get that information quickly. One of the big, I feel, progress that we've had is unifying boat banks with the flags, warning flags. We tried at the fall of last year to record these videos. I will say, I froze, along with all the other area department heads in ocean safety. But we were able to pull it off this spring. And so every municipality along boat banks currently has beach warning flags in unison in a unified effort to try to get this message out across Carteret County. So the two videos that we were able to do was beach warning flags and rip current videos. Those can be found through that website as well, along with those social media pushes. Those videos are being played, as far as that technology that I spoke about, at our west regional and east regional bathhouses, Sharks Den, Salty Pirate, and we're working on getting other locations stood up at this time.
At this point, I believe there's a recommendation.
Yeah, I'll take it. Do you mind going back one slide for me, Bill? So for our entire team of elected officials and any residents that are here or business owners, we would ask that if there is a location that has a television or the spot for a television, the town finds the investment of that television with this rip current safety data and beach warning flag information to be rotating. We are interested in partnering with anybody either on or even off island. So we're working with, for example, Jersey Mike's across the bridge in Cape Carteret, any other high-density location that's going to see a lot of transient population coming in and out. We've even considered advertising on the Get Go, the gas apps. That's very inexpensive, and we know that the fishing tournament had great success with that. So as we continue to develop ideas, we're asking the community to help come forward with locations that we could put those QR stickers on. So if you have a great place that you love to go, and they have either carryout or a to-go cup, any of those options, the more places we can place those decals, the more places that we can see this reverberating video playing when there's specifically somebody in the queue, we can hit our population. Now, those of you that have attended our meetings, you've probably seen this a couple of times. We have to remember that our population shifts to the tune of 40,000 to 50,000 people every week. So we appreciate you helping us share that message, and we know that many eyes and many hands can make for light work. Again, we're asking, if you know somewhere, please reach out to any one of us, and we'll work to go try to develop that relationship. But thank you to each and every one of those business owners and locations that have already embraced us and brought us in, if you'll advance to that final slide. As we continue, it doesn't matter if it's preseason, a peak season or postseason, we have an ongoing beach safety committee. And what we'd ask for tonight, there's been a shift in the board. We would ask for a re-establishment or reaffirmation of the two elected officials that sit with us on that committee, as we are thrilled that we have a handful of really interesting and unique ideas that we want to develop and finish up over the course of the next month. And we are looking for support from the board in the form of an affirmation as to placement of the two beach safety committee members tonight, if you can, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Normisle and Finch to that committee.
Okay. Motion on the floor to nominate Jim Normisle and Steve Finch to the beach, reestablished beach safety committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved.
Before we move on, Matt, I think the Emerald Isle Business Association Board would support. We have a very long list of email addresses for all of the, almost every business in Emerald Isle that can be sent out through our CRM. Maybe we can, we can work on some messaging to send to them, just to pique their interest.
Excellent.
And I'd also like to bring something up, too. I was sitting here listening, and you always trigger great ideas for me to, as you're talking. On the, going back to the golf carts, how many golf carts do we have now on Emerald Isle? The, Matt?
We have approximately 1,300 that were registered, and Chief will tell us if that number's changed.
So around 1,300. So I have one of those 1,300 golf carts. And on the golf carts, there's a little sticker down in the far left-hand corner. Most of those people use those golf carts to go from their house to the beach and back. I think we redesigned that sticker on the golf cart on the left-hand side, says the rules and regulations. Also, it would be a perfect spot, as I get on my golf cart, as I'm cruising to the beach, I'll see that little flag on the bottom there. It reminds me what the flags mean and stuff. It might be another good spot to put our signals on there, too. So just an idea. Just came to me as you were speaking.
Thank you, Mark. All right. At this time, we will take any comments from our town clerk, attorney and manager. Anna?
I'm not lying. We did continue our safety PSA for beach safety and other lives. We share our information through our variety in our social media pages and our website. We appreciate you all coming to us, saying your advice, and we need to continue to get out there.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Stanley?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Mr. Zapp?
At this time, Mayor, the only thing I'd like to do is recognize, is we're ramping up into the summer season. We saw heat indexes north of 100 degrees today. And if you do have an opportunity to raise your hand or thank the staff that you'll see out there working diligently, eight, 10 and 12 hours on a turn, it's just a thank you from our desk to theirs. And some of the things that we're going to try to do for employee retention and satisfaction, you'll see new cooling towels being provided to each of our staff members that say, thanks, you're awesome, because we honestly believe that they are extremely awesome. And so we're looking at small turns there, and we're all, our team is trying to identify other ways to say thank you back to our community members and team members that are out in the field every day. But just to applaud them coming out of Memorial Day as we prep going into July 4th weekend. The entire town looks beautiful, and I want to just say thank you to all of our public maintenance, parks maintenance and team members.
Thank you very much. We'll take comments now from the board. Commissioner Taylor?
I just want to say thank you, thanks to the mayor and the board, and the previous board, too, for the support for the Emerald Isle Fishing Tournament. It's been my pleasure to be part of it, continue to be part of it. Thanks Parks and Recs for all their support, getting things set up during the tournament day, and all the volunteers that made it happen. It's been one of my great honors to be part of that, sitting here on the board. So I really do appreciate that. And a great meeting tonight, and I'm, thank you for Laura and Matt for getting our budget balanced at always. It's a pleasure to see you work so hard and how it turns out. I'm always amazed how you can squeeze, squeeze so much and make so much out of so little. So thank you for that.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Finch?
Yeah, I just want to thank Commissioner Taylor for his efforts when your fishing tournament, and all those that serve on your board along with you. It's an outstanding job. Laura and Matt, and to all the employees, thank you for the hard work that you've put in for this budget. You do an awesome job each year. And just want to extend our warm welcome to all the new employees for the town of Emerald Isle. And a big thank you to all the existing employees for a job well done every day. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Masser?
Just reiterating what the commissioners have said so far, plus just very complimentary of the staff with the completion of this budget in a very trying year. My compliments. Outstanding job.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Vogel?
I have a couple of things. Thank you, Matt and Laura, for the budget process and making sure that the board remained educated on where your head was and for the many hours that you spent with many of us here to, land here to approve the budget for next year. For all the town employees, and I'll especially call out Public Works, as you did, Matt. I saw in the monthly report that two tons of trash were carried, was carried off the beach on Memorial, on Memorial Day weekend alone. The beach looks beautiful. They do a wonderful job. Town events. Memorial Day, there was a walk organized here in Emerald Isle by a couple of businesses and by a couple of constituents in the community. It was something that I started in Cedar Point a couple of years ago. There were five people. We usually have about 50 people show up. Well, this year, there were close to 200 people walking down Emerald Drive. That's a very large crowd of people to have gathered in one spot and moving through the town. So I encourage those folks who organize that to come to the town with their ideas for events of that nature. So many people show up for those great things. I think the police department would probably like to be involved in a crowd that large and perhaps the town. So I've encouraged folks to step forward on that. And that's all I got.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Normisle?
Disadvantage of going last is finding some more compliments to share. My partner in crime here got me with Artis Department. Look, isn't it great? We get to serve in a town where it is so easy to share compliments about our staff. I mean that. I'm going to continue on with Artis Department, if that's okay, just a few more great things. In addition to our Public Works trying to do, well, not trying, they are working stormwater issues constantly. The month of May, they've been reshaping some dirt and sand in the 8,700 block of Redrive, doing some more stormwater improvements in the 6,000 block of Ocean Drive, and other improvements during May. Mentioned the two tons of trash off the beach. Wouldn't it be great one day where we didn't even have trash cans on the beach? Where you just brought it there and do like grandma taught us, you bring it home. Maybe we'll get there one day. But in the meantime, thanks for Artis for hauling, and his team, for hauling that two tons of trash off the beach just that weekend. And then lastly, in Artis' list here with his folks, the yardway service that come and collect our goods, they logged in 2,146 miles hauling our stuff off. Good for them. And we do send our white goods to the recycler because Artis' team brought 50 cubic yards to the recycler in May. And finally, another thing we've got to work on, and thanks to his team for fixing, they stopped the truck with their shovels and fill in 24 massive, large holes that we dug in the sand. Somebody dug in the sand. And over time, we've got to nail that message down, too. We can, we can certainly do better. And I know most people fill in the holes. I get it. I get it. But it's a safety thing, and it's a turtle thing. But at night, it's a safety thing. But thanks for them on the hot days, stopping the truck, filling in 24 holes. Thanks for having me back. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that very much. Couldn't have said any of that any better than myself. And just a huge thanks to Matt, Laura and staff for the budget. Thank you, Mark, for your work in the committee for their work on the fishing tournament. Congratulations to all of the scholarship recipients. And thank you to the board for all the hard work that you guys and girls put in every day. It's a once-a-month meeting, but it's always interesting to see what goes on and the amount of research and due diligence that it takes to keep the town running. I'm proud to be a very small part of that, and thank you all for what you do. At this time, we'll need a motion to go into closed session.
I'd like to make a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318,11 to consult with our attorney.
All in favor, say aye. Motion is approved. We are now in closed session. Members of our community, thank you for coming. Thank you for being here.